Mr. Clark, are you ready to begin your recording?
Yes, sir.
I've been waiting for it to be seven o'clock and then it's been a minute, so it's never going to be seven.
You can try it twice a day, your honor. Let me take that stretch down.
Okay, if the clerk is ready to record, we will call the order of the regular meeting of the Pittsburgh District Commission for Mondays at 2:28, 2:15 to begin with our custody of the muller's assets. Mr. Clark, would you please?
Sir, would you like to bow out for a pledge? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business will be approval of the consent agenda. We have three items, last meeting's minutes, and ordinance amending the Pittsburgh operating budget. And the finance officers report as of the end of August. Any changes or additions, deletions from the consent agenda?
I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. I would like to offer the following modifications to the minutes, and sorry that I didn't get these out to you earlier, but in the discussion on the small area plan where we included the public facilities, it lists town administration, public water supply and distribution systems, public wastewater collection and treatment system, public schools, solid waste collection, fire and police facilities, and I don't think there was any mention of solid waste in the minutes, so I don't think that's an accurate portrayal, having spoken the words, I don't recall them, so I would make a motion that we strike that in the minutes.
Any other changes? That's all. Here's a second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda is approved as amended with a minutes change. And next order of business will be to approve the regular agenda. Any changes, additions, deletions, modifications to the regular agenda? If not, go ahead, a motion to approve. Someone's coming.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll be opposed, amended, approved. Brings us to citizen matters. We have one citizen signed up. Elaine Chiosavou. Although we know you well, please state your name and address in the record.
Elaine Chiosavou, Hall River Keeper for the Hall River Assembly in Bynum. And I'm just here to let you know about a couple of things going on with the Hall River Assembly. We are just through with our first week of our annual, this is the 26th annual Hall River Learning Celebration for schoolchildren along the river, and we just finished our first week in Bynum. We're happy to have the kids from Pittsboro Elementary School there. It was a great week despite a little rain at the end, and I just want to give special thanks to State Parks for letting us use the Lower Hall River State Natural Area once again for this program, and especially the Shakori Hills for bringing out their 40 by 40 big top tents for us to use as a rain shelter for the kids during the program. So it was another great four days of schools and kids that learned a lot about the river and had a great time. Secondly, I just wanted to let you know that we have received a grant from Triangle Community Foundation for the coming year, starting really in October, to both advocate and advocate for the protection and the enjoyment of the Lower Hall River State Natural Area and also Bynum Beach, so basically public lands along the hall in Chatham County. And so we'll be holding a lot of hikes and paddles. We'll kick it off at our November 7th Annual Meeting in Bynum, which of course you're all welcome to, and we'll be having some meetings about that land probably throughout the year, and I expect to come back and, you know, hope to say a little more to you about what we're doing, but just wanted to let you know. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, then we have the one speaker. We just do third order of business, which is to hear from Dr. Levith Knapp. Is that correct?
Knapp. I'll bet, yeah.
Okay.
Hey, good evening. So my name is Detlef Knapp. I'm a professor at North Carolina State University in the Department of Civil Construction and Environmental Engineering, and I'm here primarily to report on some results of research that we've been conducting over the last year, and I thought this would be of interest to everyone because it affects the Pittsburgh drinking water quality. And so the chemical that we're studying is called 1-4-dioxane, and so a few things I want to talk about. First, just introduce what 1-4-dioxane is, tell you about its occurrence in Pittsburgh's drinking water source, the Hall River, and then also in the drinking water itself, and then tell you a little bit about where it's coming from. So first item of importance, 1-4-dioxane is not dioxin. You know, dioxins are well-known as some extremely toxic substances. 1-4-dioxane is a carcinogen, a likely carcinogen, but it's nowhere near as toxic as dioxin, which is the compound on the right. 1-4-dioxane has been used in the past as a solvent stabilizer, so it's often found in contaminated groundwater, but more recently 1-4-dioxane is used as a solvent in manufacturing, especially textile industries and also specialty chemical industries. And it's also a byproduct of manufacturing. For example, if we make polyester or PET plastics or make certain detergents, shampoos, et cetera, then 1-4-dioxane is an unwanted byproduct that then often ends up in wastewater. 1-4-dioxane is miscible in water, so it's extremely soluble, and therefore it's also very difficult to remove from water once it's in the water. And right now, it's an unregulated contaminant, and EPA is monitoring for it nationwide, and so there's something called the Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule. It's a three-year effort. We're almost done with that, and the end of December, the third year of data collection will finish, and data has been published for the first two and a half years approximately. This survey basically just looks at finished drinking waters across the U.S. and only for public water systems that serve more than 10,000 people, so water supply like Pittsburgh would not be included in this survey. And here are some results of the data as released to date. There have been almost 30,000 samples that have been analyzed across the nation, and I'm highlighting just the highest concentrations that have been found. And so you can see that in California and New York are the largest numbers of detects of high concentrations, but they're all in groundwater. The third largest number of detects with high concentrations is in North Carolina, and they're all in surface water. This was actually a real surprise because up till this point, we all thought it's just a groundwater contaminant. So, you know, this slide is something that maybe is important to understand, you know, the risk related to 1-4-dioxane. So EPA classifies 1-4-dioxane as a likely human carcinogen, so there's not enough data that it is a known human carcinogen but is likely to cause cancer. And if we think about risk, I put three concentrations there on the board, .35, 3.5, and 35 micrograms per liter, and those would be the risks that go along with it. So we think of an acceptable risk in drinking water if the cancer risk is somewhere between 1 in a million to 1 in 10,000. So we might consider these levels of 1-4-dioxane as levels that could be regulatory levels if there were a standard that the EPA would promulgate at some point. And 1-4-dioxane in terms of cancer potency is somewhat similar in potency to a couple of disinfection byproducts that also occur in drinking water, and so the two compounds at the bottom already occur in Pittsburgh's drinking water and basically every drinking water across the United States. So, you know, the risk levels of those compounds are similar to those of 1-4-dioxane, and the maximum allowable concentration of these two compounds plus two more would be 80 micrograms per liter. So, you know, we're talking about a carcinogen, but we're also talking about risk levels that are relatively low, the 1 in a million to 1 in 10,000. So, but maybe keep these numbers in mind, .35 to 35 micrograms per liter. So in our study over the last year, we've been collecting data in the Cape Fear River watershed primarily. We sample from bridges and follow a method that we developed in our lab and cross-checked with standard EPA methods. And here are some results that we've been finding for the Hall River here at Bynum. And so, you know, we see that 1-4-dioxane levels vary quite a bit. This is data from October 2014 through August of this year, and so we have a minimum level of 1.6, a maximum of about 66, and the average is around 16 micrograms per liter in the Hall River. These levels are, you know, compared to nationwide data, quite high. You know, the highest concentration in the UCMR3 database is 33 micrograms per liter, so here we have 66, so double what is currently the highest in the U.S. This slide is all busy. There are three curves on here. The red one shows the concentrations of 1-4-dioxane again in the Hall River water, and these are data that we collected in collaboration with Adam Pickett's water treatment plant here. So his staff collected samples for us, composited them hourly, so we basically got a daily average concentration, and then we collected daily samples over a period of about six weeks from mid-March to the end of April of this year. And so what you see on the raw water side is that the average concentration during the six-week period was about seven micrograms per liter, and the maximum was 24. And then in green, you see the finished drinking water, and that green curve is always just lagging, basically a day behind because the water spends about a day in the treatment plant. So we see this delay, but the concentrations, if we average them, are essentially the same in the raw and the finished water, suggesting, you know, that the current treatment wouldn't remove 1-4-dioxane, which is what you would expect for almost every treatment plant across the country, 1-4-dioxane being just very difficult to remove. The other thing on this graph is the blue line, which shows the flow in the Hall River, and there's something a little bit puzzling about these data. You know, what we initially thought was that when the flow would be really low, the concentrations would be high because the 1-4-dioxane would get diluted out, but in fact, what we're seeing is when the flows spike, then, you know, we have a spike in flow, spike in flow, and the concentrations actually go up. So it's possible that, you know, somebody's actually releasing 1-4-dioxane when the flow is high to dilute out the 1-4-dioxane as much as possible. And, you know, one thing we were curious about is, you know, how much mass of 1-4-dioxane is coming down the river on any given day, so this is over the same six-week study period. And, you know, there was a long stretch where, you know, we were just between like five to 10 pounds of 1-4-dioxane a day, but then there are peaks, you know, where a couple hundred pounds, even over 500 pounds, came down the river on a given day. So in the last part of this presentation is, you know, probably a question that you might all have, you know, where is it coming from? And basically, for the town of Pittsburgh, there are two sources upstream that we've identified as important ones. One is the wastewater treatment plant discharge from the city of Readsville, and if we look at this sampling point A, which is just upstream of the discharge of this wastewater plant, you see that the 1-4-dioxane levels are basically extremely low, right at the detection limit of our method, but then after the wastewater enters, we see some quite elevated 1-4-dioxane concentrations, you know, 100 micrograms per liter in the Hall River, almost 300 micrograms per liter in the Hall River. So this is a clear indication that this is one of the sources. The other source is the city of Greensboro, and we have a TZ Osborne wastewater treatment plant discharge here. We sample upstream of that plant and also downstream. And upstream, the levels are above our detection limit, so there are other sources of 1-4-dioxane upstream of this wastewater plant we think is primarily a hazardous waste site. But then downstream of this wastewater treatment plant, again, we see elevated levels relative to the upstream location and sometimes quite high levels. So these are the two main sources. There may be a couple smaller sources along the Hall River, but those are the two main ones. So, you know, what does all this mean from a regulatory perspective? Currently, 1-4-dioxane is not regulated in drinking water, so the tap water meets current regulations, even though the 1-4-dioxane levels can be high. So there is no federal and no North Carolina drinking water standard. North Carolina does have a groundwater standard for 1-4-dioxane of three micrograms per liter, and I think what's most important for you all to know is that the state of North Carolina has a surface water quality standard for 1-4-dioxane, which is .35 micrograms per liter, if the water is classified or the stream is classified as a drinking water supply. So this standard is currently grossly violated, and so we are working with the state in an effort to see whether, you know, this stream water quality standard can actually be applied so that, you know, the city of Pittsburgh or other cities that are affected by these wastewater discharges don't have to worry about 1-4-dioxane in their drinking water. And that's a summary, basically, you know. So, you know, currently, there are three wastewater discharges in the Hall and the Deep River Basins that affect roughly half a million people that live downstream of those wastewater discharges, who all have to deal with elevated levels of 1-4-dioxane. And in Pittsburgh, the levels are probably the highest primarily because the Hall River here is still a small stream and often the percentage of wastewater in the Hall River is quite high. And the last point really here is my main point, you know. I think every effort should be made to push the state to enforce the surface water quality standard so that the drinking water supply for the city of Pittsburgh and other cities downstream is no longer impacted, at least to this extent, by 1-4-dioxane. And just some acknowledgements, of course, the students in my group and folks at Mason who's here. Funding agencies were funded by the North Carolina Urban Water Consortium, so these are some of the larger drinking water suppliers in the state of North Carolina, and also our National Science Foundation Rapid Grant. And we've worked closely with the city of Fayetteville, the Cape Fear Public Utilities Commission down in Wilmington, and also with Adam Pickett here in Pittsburgh. And we've also worked closely with the state already now for the last year almost to work with the wastewater treatment plants in the communities that are discharging this water. So there are efforts on the way to find out, you know, where is the 1-4-dioxane coming from, but I'm not 100% sure that this is moving at the speed that it could be moving. And with that, I'll stop. Happy to take questions.
I have just one question. The spike on the Hall River, would that have anything to do with large increased rainfall? You know, when it went low and spiked up?
Right. So these spikes would be associated with large rainfall, and it appears that during these rainfall events, 1-4-dioxane was also released into the water.
But is it coming through a wastewater treatment plant or is it just coming off the land into the river?
Right. We, 1-4-dioxane is a very water-loving chemical, so it would not stick to bio-salads, for example, that would get land applied, so it's highly unlikely that it would just be running off land.
It's not a component fertilizer anyway?
Not. You would never see these kinds of levels. This is very unique to the Cape Fear River watershed. We do not see this in any other watershed.
It seems like this would be coming from some sort of industry, and if that's the case and the industries can be identified, what can be done at that point? Are they required to stop dumping that into the river or into wastewater treatment?
Until we know what the industries are and why the 1-4-dioxane enters their waste streams, it's really difficult to speculate. You know, it would be nice to know that they could just recover the 1-4-dioxane instead of releasing it into their wastewater, but we just don't know anything about that, and it's been very difficult to get past the end of pipe of the wastewater treatment plants for us.
My other question is, what can the town of Pittsburgh do to help? The board is interested, what can be done?
Right. I think contacting Deener and Adam joined our working group, and I think one of the more effective ways to effect change is that drinking water providers push Deener to demand action.
I have one more question. Enric, you were saying it was possible that the city of Readsville, the city of Greensboro, are they, have you presented this to them with information?
Yes.
And they are going to be working with you or with?
They will be working with the state. What they said is they will be conducting an in-house sewer trunk study, which is basically something similar to what we did in the river, but in their sewer, you know, so they will probe their main sewer trunks and see where is it showing up, and then from there go to the smaller sewer lines until they find where it's coming from. So it, you know, it's potentially a daunting task, but, yeah, I think a little pushing might help.
One more question this year. So this chemical is manufactured by somebody and sold as a solvent. Is it reasonable to try and pursue your investigation from the manufacturer's direction? Or are there 50 companies that are making this?
There are several manufacturers, but in the U.S., I think there are three or four larger 1-4-dioxane manufacturers. I'm not sure how much we could find out from them.
You may not share their client base with me.
Right, right. The other possibility is that it's a byproduct during manufacturing, so in that case, it is not sold to the company and used by the company, but it is.
Created as part of the chemical reaction in some process.
Correct.
Okay, well, very interesting. I appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, man. Appreciate it.
Yeah, this is a good point. Do we want to ask staff to do the trouble lines?
He did, but Adam's.
Perhaps, maybe a follow-up report or something like that.
Do you think it's your ticket to come back?
Yeah, perhaps. Combination. Combination. Adam or else could shift the light on. Things that we might do to assist us.
The city of Greensboro and Board Readsville scheduling to report this information to this board or to Deener at any time, their findings?
So they're part of the working group and they are reporting to Deener. It processes a little slow.
I see. How long have they been working on it?
At least for the last six months. So I'm going to have another meeting with Deener on October 6th, so I can provide Adam also with an update.
That would be fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is ABC Board requests for assist working capital retention. Mr. Knapp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always a pleasure to appear before this board on behalf of the ABC members, and before I begin, I'd like to just call your attention to one item. The ABC Board is going to be sponsoring a responsible alcohol sales program, training program towards the end of October for the entire county, Chatham County. We'll be inviting board members and we'll be inviting staff, and we'll be inviting the permit holders, the people that are allowed by permit to sell alcohol, and of course, some of our law enforcement. And it's just to emphasize that the board this year has decided that underage drinking is going to be a high priority for the ABC Board this year, so we're going to be undergoing a number of activities throughout the year to really push on this item. So for the record, my name is Jim Nosson. I'm chair of the Pittsburgh ABC Board, and I want to present to you on behalf of Ned Kelly and Duncan Merle, the other board members, first, a little update on where we finished last fiscal year in comparison to the year before. Our revenues were up 11.4%, and our operating expenses were only up 4%. And again, that's a real tribute to our general manager Nancy Goosen and staff to keep our operating expenses to that level with our sales ever increasing. And a special interest to you folks is our proposed and already provided distributions to the town will be up 49.7% over last year, $79,248 compared to $52,939. So tonight I have checks for our regular minimal distribution in the amount of $6,262 per quarter four, and a check for the proposed distribution of $32,291, for a total of $38,553. Now, over the last few years, the last, I think, four years, the board has made the required minimum distributions to the town on a regular basis, but in addition to that, we have made. But in addition to that, we have made distributions beyond that level as a matter of board policy to try to do our best to support the town of Pittsburgh. However, at the end of this last fiscal year, we accumulated working capital in an amount excess allowed by state regulation. The working capital was accrued over the course of the fiscal year, and we didn't actually have excess or over the amount that we were allowed until the end of the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. Working capital is made up of cash, investments, and inventory. And in the case of Pittsburgh, about one-third of that amount is inventory and two-thirds is cash. And our auditors tell us that's about average for the state of North Carolina. Now, working capital, what is this? Well, it's computed by taking gross sales minus taxes. And minimum working capital that we're required to keep on hand is two average weeks of that as gross sales. And the maximum we're allowed to retain without special approval from the Board of Commissioners of the Appointing Authority is four months of this gross sale number. For this last fiscal year, our minimum capital requirement was $36,712 and our maximum was So our actual working capital at the end of this fiscal year was $398,900, leaving us $80,728 over the amount that we're allowed to keep without special approval from the Appointing Authority. So in accordance with state law and ABC State Commission regs, we have requested approval from Pittsburgh Board to retain 60% or $48,437 and to distribute to the town 40% or $32,291. The retained amount will be used for current and future capital improvements and to repair the equipment and building of the current store. In this coming, the fiscal year we're in now, $24,000 will be used to repurpose existing administrative space into retail space in order to further increase sales. The remainder will be set aside to begin preparation for building up funds to handle our anticipated additional needs. In trying to plan for the future, the ABC Board has looked at what will our needs in the future be, when will those occur, and particularly, how much will they cost? And our focus for the last bit has been, how in the world are we going to pay for the meeting the needs that we see into the future? We have concluded the best way for the ABC Board for meeting these needs is to seek approval from the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners to retain 60% of working capital over the maximum allowed and to distribute 40% of this excess working capital to the town of Pittsburgh until amended or revoked by the Board of Commissioners. We cannot predict with certainty exactly how much working capital we're going to accumulate in the future, but we are confident that the 60-40 split will allow us to meet our needs and provide us sufficient money to build, to obtain the additional stores that we are going to need. We believe one new store will be needed in five to eight-year timeframe and a second additional store will be needed in the 20 to 25-year timeframe. In addition to that, we believe it likely that at some point during this timeframe, we will need to relocate the current downtown facility into a new one. However, we do believe that the sale of the current facility at that current ground at that time will be sufficient to cover the vast majority of those relocation expenses. So I want to thank the mayor, the Board of Commissioners, town staff, and your liaison to our board, Commissioner Piocco, for this report during the year. And I'll be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Questions from the board?
I just wondered what the current rate of continuing to work with capital, is there a percentage that they take it out there?
No, ma'am.
No, there's not. What we do on a regular, on a quarterly basis is we figure the distribution that we're required to make. And that consists of the 3.5% markup on liquor sold and a 5-cent bottle charge for each bottle of liquor sold. That money is set aside as a distribution to the town of Pittsburgh. Now, in addition to that, the board, ABC Board, can make additional distributions to the town of Pittsburgh. Should we choose to do that, which we have throughout the years? However, when you get to the point where, this is the first time this has happened, when you get to the point by the end of the year, you have accumulated more than four months of gross sales in your working capital account, then anything over that amount is considered excess without approval from the local board to retain it. So this is the first time that we've been in a situation where we've had excess.
Jim, one question. Only 40%?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
And 60%. Where did these numbers come from? Is this just something your board that you felt was comfortable?
Well, we looked out into the future and we said that if we're going to have to have a new store in five to eight years, we're going to need to set aside somewhere in the neighborhood of $350,000 to $400,000 in order to build out that leased facility. We have no real hope of ever accumulating sufficient amount of money to actually build and own. But to lease it will cost us somewhere about $350,000 to $400,000 for that build-out. In 20 to 25 years, we estimate a doubling of that to somewhere around $650,000 to $700,000, simply at the rate that we expect inflation to occur over that period of time. So if we accumulate 60% of projected excess working capital of around, our share would be around $45,000 per year on average, that will give us around, in five years, $200,000 plus, in eight years, around $300 plus. And we'll be very close to being able to actually build out a leased facility. By build out, I mean taking the empty space that is there that we're going to lease and then making that into an ABC store. So the way we came up with the 60-40 was figuring the amount of money that we would require at the end of that five, eight-year period and then at the end of the 20, 25-year period in order to lease those two other stores. And hopefully not run into any huge problem with the existing store that we have, although some of that money would be available if that did happen.
Here's my next question, and maybe to Nancy. How's this going to affect our budget? Do we have a budget line on this or anything?
For this will be fiscal year 2014, it would be additional revenue that we would recognize as a receivable at year end because we're receiving the money now, but we would show it as an increase in our revenue at the end of the year.
For next, buddy?
No, for this year. We would recognize it as a receivable, which will be on our balance sheet for our audit.
Okay. I think what Mr. Farrell's getting at is you budgeted a certain amount of revenues for ABC, and if I read these numbers correctly, we'll hit our targets.
Okay, well, we'll definitely be above budget for what we budgeted for 2014.
Even with Mr. Nasse's suggestion, we'll still hit our targets and be able to allow them to accumulate capital for this future.
I believe so. I'd have to double, just double check to see what the year-to-date numbers are, but I'm pretty sure we'll be above projection.
Yeah, I think we will.
Well, I think you're giving us a distribution right now, first quarter, well, total $38,000 for this fiscal year. And we budgeted 50.
Yes.
As a revenue source. So I think we're on track, doing really well.
That's good.
Yeah.
Well, any other questions? I would just comment that the improvement in the management of this store of the last four years under Mr. Nasse and Mr. Kelly and the other person's name, who's been on the other. We came really close to losing this store back in the 2008, '09, '10 timeframe and under their management, it's flourished. And I for one appreciate the advanced planning and thinking they've been doing and I'm inclined to support this and I hope the rest of the board will too.
I agree. I think it's a visionary, big, big plan ahead for the work that's coming and then I'm trying to encourage forward thinking.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions here, I motion to approve Mr. Nasse's proposal.
So, second.
Let's see, we all have a resolution to approve the recommendation here. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not opposed, let's thank you, Mr. Nasse.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to give you these checks for $38,000. Some dollars.
Thank you all.
Can I ask a question? Is it intended for this to be for the future as well or is this just for the current year?
I believe the paper that you wrote said that they have to come back annually to...
That is a recommendation of the manager, but is that what you all just voted on?
I think you should have come back annually.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine, if that's...
Okay, so this action is only for this current year?
Yes.
The paper's on the line.
They can make their request again annually and then, of course, we get to see their audits and everything, so we'll be able to keep track of this. Of course, as I say, we have very high confidence in this particular... Okay. Item number three, adjustment to fee schedule for small area plans, Mr. Walden.
Good evening, Mayor Terry Fisherman. The last, at your last meeting, approved a process for submittal review and action on small area plans that will come to the town as part of the ongoing Chatham Park and just adjusted tonight the small... One of the, what we say in this memorandum is that the existing application fee for small area plans is $825. Given the scope of the small area plans that we have proposed to you and that you have adopted, including work by the town staff to set up and facilitate and summarize public information needs and so on, and the extent of technical analysis that needs to be done in review of those small area plans, we, our conclusion was that that fee, application fee, was well short of the mark of what the town would be expending in the way of resources and costs. So after looking at the process and then reviewing what other similar communities nearby are doing with similar processes, it's our conclusion that a more appropriate fee for application fee for small area plans that are submitted would be $825 plus $20 per acre of the area that is subject of the small area plan. So our recommendation to you is that you adopt the resolution that we have in the packet that we're just asking.
Questions from the board?
This is a general fee for any small area plan.
Yes.
And we at present really don't have anything other than Chatham Park that is proposing small area plans.
That's correct.
Several of the items listed as generators of the cost were staff time and some of the other items were consulting.
Yes.
And one that I think wasn't included but mentioned, and I don't know if this would affect the cost recommendation, is a financial consultant. I don't know if we will in-house do all the financial analysis of the small area plan for Chatham Park.
Well, the, one of the, one of the pieces of information that is to be submitted as part of a small area plan, you're correct, is the fiscal information for the, about the impacts of the proposed development and the cost of town services and so on. And the, it may be that a outside help might be needed, but I think that the, initially the problem would be to look at that with current town resources. But again, it's whether it's current town resources or outside help, it is a town cost, so that's...
And the idea with this fee is to recoup that cost?
Yes.
Yeah. Have you ever seen an example where somebody structured their ordinance or resolution in sort of a cost-plus manner, the base cost for the administrative handling and then an expression that whatever else it costs, we'll send you the bill for? Because you don't always know what kind of consulting service you're going to be looking at some.
The one, the one circumstance, something like that, that I'm familiar with, again, doesn't exactly apply here, but it is, some towns, well, many communities require for specific development applications that a traffic impact analysis be submitted as part of the application to assess the impacts of that proposed development. Now, some communities, instead of requiring submission of the statement, require a fee and then the community hires its own traffic engineer to do the traffic impact analysis. And in that kind of circumstance, the application fee is adjusted to reflect the cost of that engineering firm preparing a traffic impact analysis. So that's the only one I'm familiar with.
Yeah, okay. Well, I see what we're trying to do, it strikes me as being sort of minimalist, $20 per acre spent over Chatham Park's 700 acres will only generate $140,000. And that won't do a whole lot of studies over 27 small area plans, so I guess I would, I'm a little concerned that we're low on...
Yes. The one, one idea that I would offer there is that it wasn't our expectation here that the, that the outside help that might be needed would actually be doing studies. It's more that the outside help would be used to re-review what is being submitted so that...
Okay, well, this is at least a step in the right direction. I don't have any other questions. Any other questions from working groups?
I don't have any questions. I just want to comment, also, like you said, also, Mayor, that I don't see where the $20 per acre is going to cover a whole lot of expenses. But we can always adjust our fees, correct?
If it turns out after some experience with this that it's just not getting the job done, I suppose that fee could be adjusted in a subsequent action.
I would, I would expect that that's, that is a definite possibility. This is all new ground for...
So perhaps we should test the waters and see. Okay. Okay. Is there no further questions? Just your motion on the subject?
We make motion that we adopt the fee as recommended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Not opposed, the resolution adopting this by P is passed. Next is a preliminary plat review for the Davy Street cottages.
Mr. Mayor, the, this item is coming, coming back to you following your August 24th board meeting. We've got in the memorandum a bit of the history about this application for approval of a preliminary plat. It's in an area that is zone R10, which allows a density and anticipates to allow some 10 meters per acre and encourages cottage, this compact-style development. The, this item had, this proposal was originally for nine residential, last nine, nine units. And then the applicant, in response to some of the concerns and issues that were raised, reduced the number of dwellings that would be proposed to be built on the site from nine to eight using the...
How's your order?
We're on Davy Street.
We're on Davy Street.
That would be taking the ninth lot and having it be common space around the residential dormitory. So it's eight units. Other concerns that were raised, this has been to the planning board twice, this is the second time to the Board of Commissioners. There, in the packet is a series of... the second time to the Board of Commissioners, there, in the packet is a series of comments that were made by the applicant in response to issues raised by the Board of Commissioners on August twenty-fourth, and the applicant is here tonight if you have questions about those. So the, the, comes back to you again tonight, the staff recommendation is for approval, that we believe it meets the town requirements and ordinance requirements. The, we point out the number of, the applicant has offered to reduce the number of dwellings from nine to eight, offered to add landscaping, and to provide assistance to neighboring properties to help address some of the current stormwater management issues that are, that those properties are experiencing now, not related to this development. So we recommend, we continue to recommend approval of this subdivision, and happy attention to your questions, and you might want to hear from the applicant.
Questions from the board for Mr. Walden, and/or the applicant?
First, I'd just like to say that a couple things I read through in the land use plan regarding this property here is in page ninety-three, the land development ordinance, is affordability. And I understand these are priced between two-thirty and two-ninety, that could be incorrect or that's close. I don't consider that affordable housing. I think also in the land development ordinance, it also has compatibility with the existing neighborhood. You're putting eight houses on one acre, a little more than one acre. I just don't see this being compatible at all with this neighborhood. I know it's, it's stolen in this R-ten, but it's definitely something this board, and our planning board, needs to go back and look through with these pocket neighborhoods. I have, I have been back, and I'm not sure, I believe this is the same developer that has started the pocket neighborhood on Cornwallis. If anybody's been by there and looked at it, it's, it's nothing like what's projected here. And I just don't want us to run into the same problem with developers signing the property and then not finishing the job. Like I said, I really have conditions about the affordability and the compatibility with the neighborhood.
And I could withstand concerns in reference to affordability, that is not consistent with what's there now, so that is my concern also, and compatibility as well.
Yeah, but I agree, I mean, is that, is that correct, is that the price point for the homes?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, prices have another set, but I anticipate that those, that that is within the realm that we're looking at.
I just think if somebody was doing a real estate comparison to try to get a, it might be difficult because none of the houses compare to that at this point.
The house with the power plant is going for a between three-hundred thousand, I think, there would be...
That's power plant, on Davy Street.
Yeah, but my point is, it's relative, it's the biggest one, it's the best one, it's the most...
It's not, well, this part needs to be more affordable anyway, and then...
Any questions for the developers here today, it's your question to be asked?
Well, I appreciate that Roger made mention of the idea that there are eight lots at this point proposed. I thought I had recalled that statement at the planning board, but the plans that have all been submitted are suggesting there are, are stating there are nine lots, so the plans are not necessarily reflective of the eight-lot design.
I, I think they are, the ninth lot is actually a lot that's reserved not for a single-family residence, but it's still, it's still up in the air. It's not gonna be a habit to destroy the single-family, the same for the lot, but if they wanted to, whether they even cover structure in or storage units, not storage units, like inside community building, that's the middle lot in fact.
Would that need to go on a lot?
It's, it's part of that open space lot in the middle, and we've reserved an area for it.
So it's open space? It's either a lot or it's open space, right? I think it should have water.
It is an individual lot, outside of open space, that is available for a community building.
And there would be a deed restriction on its construction as a single-family home? Is that the idea?
Correct. Lot five shall also, it's, it is a lot, but it shall be dedicated as open space in the private building easement, represents maximum building envelope for construction of community building.
So the homeowners association owns that lot?
Correct. It's outside of the required open space for the, for the ordinance, which is the central courtyard area, if there's additional open space lots. So that the intent is to house a community building.
So the required open space is based on a per-lot requirement, and so that open space has a pro-rata share of open space somewhere else in the development?
Right, well, and the, and the open space that we're providing is well inaccessible to the required, for the...
For nine lots.
Correct. And, and we're not as well, for the pocket ordinance, we could actually put up to twelve lots, and there is a way to physically fit twelve lots on there if, if that was decided. So we pull the density back, and then, again, between density and looking at the, kind of the feel and the flow of the space area, as well as the, kind of the adjacent, large street that's off-site, but still in that area, we've got this avenue, we're looking at full building lot, and usually that's a good building right there.
Are you guys planning on building these eight dwellings before they're sold, or you, if this is approved or denied, or are you planning on one at a time as you sell?
I expect we'll build all eight at once, and that the majority of those will be pre-sold.
There's already quite a bit expressed interest in from Lot Five.
So if, in fact, you were to get the preliminary plat approved, you'd have to then go through the process of getting a stormwater permit?
Correct, and that, all that stuff is already applied, we just have to get the grading permit to the county.
Okay. One other thing, obviously relying on bio-retention, and you have a note that talks about the seasonal high-water table. Do you know the seasonal high-water table? You do?
There's license all the time just out there to do a high-water table determination.
So you're okay being two feet above that?
Correct. And, and with a bio-retention with the IWS, which is an internal water system, the PMP may, it hasn't been updated yet, but that seasonal high-water table elevation is irrelevant because you're actually, the whole point in the way that's internal water system wants to take out even more of the, the normal bio-retention, that leaves water to lock. If it hadn't gone, you would never see it, but... I just wanna reiterate as well, when, you know, we've gone through two iterations that, and there were, at least in homeowner concerns and planning commissioner concerns that were addressed, and then when we were here last time, we had, we had a couple of this, five or six specific questions, and I was concerned to address in the plans. And we, we have addressed all those, we submitted it back to the town, town staff has looked at it, still seems that everything is unacceptable and approval. And I recall at the, at the end of the last meeting, we talked about, if we go back and do these things, that's, you know, we've basically addressed all the outstanding concerns from the planning commissioner and board commissioner.
I think this will be good for our, for our town, for our, to increase the population of the town, and we're also, we're considering, I'm, I'd like to do this project before. Like I said, they've been wanting to comply with all the things we've asked them to do thus far, in compliance with the ordinance, we're deciding. Make a motion that we approve.
Got a motion to approve the preliminary plat review for Davy Street cottages, I hear a second.
Second. I'd like to also have some discussion about the off-site improvements that are offered. I'd like to see those honored, and that, I know the homeowner's not here this evening, but I'd like to have a report, and, not our next meeting, but the second meeting from this evening, with the results of your discussions on whether those improvements will be made or not. And I think that would be subject to her coming to an agreement with you.
Sure. Any other discussion before a call for removal? It's been moved and seconded, and we approve this preliminary plat review for Davy Street cottages, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I hear three noes and two ayes, so the motion fails.
I'm baffled, I feel like we put these developers through the rear, and it doesn't seem fair.
I don't know if I can speak, I feel the same, I feel like we were told in almost no uncertain terms that if we addressed those outstanding five or six issues last time we were here, that, you know, it is a use by right, we're meeting all of the town's standards from an engineering perspective, from a zoning perspective, so I'm, I'm not sure either how, how, not only is it not fair, but how, how is it even possible? Is that a...
The affordability for me is, is really concerning.
I, I understand that, then, that, I don't know that affordability is expressly part of the ordinance, or if it spells out...
Right, but our land use plan talks about that, so...
We didn't provide the land use plan for Chatham Park, we didn't, we didn't...
But they are well-being affordable housing in Chatham.
I just wanna say that, I, I am a big supporter of affordable housing, but it's difficult to define, we can't just say, it's a complex determination, we're not looking at affordable, that's not, I hope that's fair, we haven't said that to them, not to them before.
If you know three-hundred thousand, if that's what the amount is, if that's what you're indicating, we know that's not... And we think three-hundred thousand...
I, I think we would start in the, in the low-two-hundreds, but...
Capable to a nineteen-fifties range versus a brand-new fully energy efficient...
Small house, or...
No, they're not small, they're not small.
They're not that small.
No, or definitely. I think that's, that's not as small, that's not, that's not an unreasonable price for that car.
I think it's still affordable.
Those, are there any conditions, I wonder, where the board would encourage this, bring this back, or is this a final decision? The issue of affordability is not gonna change, the issue of changing, even though it's compliant with all of our regulations, the staff's recommended approval. I don't know what they could do to, I don't know what they could do to change the affordability, I don't know what they could do to change the fact that it's not exactly like the neighboring lots, so, but my hearing that there's, that we're not suggesting that they make changes to bring this back, this is a board's final, I don't wish to see this.
I mean, we can't, I mean, we're just gonna, that would make me here at the best time, but your goal is, so... And also, I don't feel like they've addressed the neighboring property owners' concerns to their satisfaction, I don't know if they're a fact, but it's just...
I just think they should have put that the last week, it's, it's a good warning, totally held policy, should have, should have mentioned before.
We have... I didn't hear one mention of affordability, and I, and I don't know how, on a, on a use-by-right, the town does not have a specific ordinance that deals with affordability with new subdivisions, how you can pick and choose which subdivisions you're going to require to be affordable and which you're not. I'm, I'm still, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm baffled that, that use-by-right zoning, that we've worked now, you know, six months on.
Well, sorry for the outcome, this, the vote was taken and it's, it's been denied, so I think we're gonna move on to our next subject, and I would encourage you, if you wanna continue to pursue this, you can do so through the staff, and if, if there's some eventuality that you think you're just bringing it back, we have to discuss it with our new planning director, and, and the town manager, if you feel there's some reason to pursue this further with the town, I'd like you to do that.
Thank you.
Item number five, Thompson Street Townhouse rezoning, special use permit.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this one comes, goes back to you, following the public hearing that you had on August twenty-fourth, the, and the application is to rezone this portion of property from C-two to R-ten, this is the property that currently goes from East, East Street to Thompson Street, and the portion fronting east has medical office building, and the proposal is to rezone the portion fronting Thompson Street to R-ten, and then to accompany the rezoning application, as a, as an application for a special use permit to authorize construction of three townhouses. Went to public hearing, then, following public hearing, went to the planning board, it was September fifteenth, the planning board unanimously recommended approval of, quote, rezoning and the special use permit, and in your packet is the planning board statement of offering the community that this rezoned would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So given all of that, our recommendation to you tonight is that you take two actions, one, to adopt an ordinance, I mean, the zoning map, to rezone this portion of property to R-ten, and second, a resolution that will prove discussions...
Do we have an applicant here on this, do we have an applicant here on this one? Okay, any questions from board members, or the applicant? I don't have questions, perhaps let Mr. Ash make a comment?
Thank you, good evening, board members and staff, Mark Ashness with the C Group. Just briefly, Roger's touched base on it, we had some good discussion at the planning board, we just felt like the back half of this parcel on Thompson Street is adjacent to residential uses, it's currently zoned in C-two, so this seemed to be a more appropriate utilization of that backside of the property, would be compatible with other residential uses on that street, since there wouldn't be a planned road coming from East Street across to Thompson, in that location. All the other properties are joining it, the, the piece here just to the east of it has a split zoning already, it's C-two and R-ten back here, this one was the only one that happened to be C-two all the way from front to back, so we think it'll be a good, good use at this location, thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
Well, I agree, I think this would be a, a good way to split that lot from a zoning perspective, I know you'll subdivide and create this townhouse development, and I think it would fit well. I think you've indicated, as is... I think you've indicated, as is part of the requirements, the appearance of the units, and I think they, they would look very well there. So I'll make a motion that we amend the zoning ordinance and the zoning map accordingly.
Will you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I mean, opposed, the rezoning is approved. Next item would be a special use permit.
Make a motion that we pass the resolution approving a special use permit for Thompson Street Townhouse.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not being opposed, the special use permit is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, wastewater treatment plant option recommendation from engineer Mr. Royal.
Good evening. So this is a follow-up from the utility workshop that we held on August 17th. After some further review with Wooton Company and staff, we've come to the conclusion to recommend what's called Option A that was delivered in your packet. And I won't go into the details just yet, but some of the, the reason for the recommendation tonight is this is our last opportunity to submit an application to revolving loan fund by the end of the month. And we did some research with Deener and we discovered that we can, we can submit an application to Deener for the, an amount of funds, but it can always be amended downward. So we looked at Option A and we realized the cost estimate, which is significant, but we also realized that we could go back after further study, financial analysis, et cetera, and go back to Deener and reduce it if, if we find that that's prudent. Option A is, well, let me, let me talk about where we started. When we hired Wooton, we asked them to look at our existing plant and tell us what we can do and what it would cost to expand our capacity from .75 to 1.249 million gallons a day. And the reason we did that was twofold. One is we, we had a permit, revised permit, permit modification to discharge 1.249 annual average into Rogess and Cree. And the second reason is we looked at our demand curve going out in the future, just looking at the town of Pittsburgh, not assuming Chatham Park, but looking at the town of Pittsburgh with the zoning before Chatham Park even came into being essentially. And the graph, it's a green line represented on your graph. I hope you have a color copy. Let's call it Option A graph. It looks like this. But the reason is that we, we have, you know, we've realized that we have to do something to increase our treatment capacity in some way before the green line crosses the lower dash line down there in about 2017, 2018. Now, that is just a graph. It doesn't mean that's going to happen. But that's the, that's the line, the first, the shallow green line is the one we were following at first. So Wooton looked at that with us.
Sir, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
You are citing 2017 before it crosses, but it looks like it's 2019?
There's 2018.
Right.
1918, so 19.
Okay, so 19?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's just an estimate. That also doesn't include our wet weather flows that spike, which isn't another item tonight. It's the last item tonight, so we'll talk about that later. So we looked at the existing footprint at the, at the wastewater plant. And as we all know, it's a very challenging site. It's basically a peninsula with a floodplain wrapped around it. So they did a great job looking at various technologies and alternatives and costs at that existing site for 1.249. And as you may recall, every option was difficult because of floodplain, because of adjacent neighbors, and just because of the setbacks required, the buffers and what have you. So right off the bat, we had a challenge. Then we looked at the cost just to do that. And as you may recall, the cost was significant just to get to 1.249. So those are all difficult results that we had to work with. We did come up with one preferred alternative, which was this MBR technology where it uses smallest footprint possible, but we still have to go north up Small Street and purchase property and build other treatment facilities just to make it fit, shoehorn it in, if you will, to the property. And it was still extremely expensive. You know, we're talking $18 million for that. So that, that, that was our reality, but we had to look at everything. So that's where we were. Then, then we looked at Chatham Park additional to Pittsburgh, which represents the red line. And that's a significant change. So we began looking at other options, including the option of 1.249, just other options so we can look at our full suite of sewer treatment options. And so we had all these options, A, B, and C, in these different scenarios, combinations, off-site, decommissioning the existing plant, building a new plant in another location. And then we started looking at going to Sanford with up to 2 million gallons a day because we wanted to know apples to apples what that would cost. Turns out, based on the analysis that Wooton did, including the operations and maintenance, the Sanford option was a viable alternative, at least from a financial standpoint, cost standpoint. I'm not going to go into the financial analysis because that's not what I really do, but we're just looking at raw numbers here at this point. So Option A includes Sanford, but it also includes keeping the existing plant we have operating. And the reason we like that plan is several reasons. Well, to me, one of the most important ones is we've got a lot of debt on the recent upgrade. I believe it was 2009, we put in the EQ basins. So we owe about $900,000 on the plant. So that payoffs in 30 years. And so we have a 30-year payoff on the existing plant, no matter what we did. The other reason is we're making 3Ms reclaim water, and I think that's an important piece not to lose. We have in our allocation application for Jordan Lake, the fact that we're going to use this technology and continue to build our reclaim water program so that we don't have to use potable water to the extent we're using it today per capita. As our population grows, we've been telling the state, we're going to go from approximately 100 gallons a day per capita to about 60. So if we start off by removing our reclaim water system, the only one we have, I feel like we'd be slightly disingenuous and maybe the state would question our six MGD requests from Jordan Lake. That's just my personal speculation, but it's in our allocation application and it's just something to consider. So those two pieces alone are a reason I think we should keep Option A as a viable opportunity to at least go to the state and say, here's our alternative, but we may, we may not ask for the full amount of money where we requested because we have other financial options. Option A includes a standalone Chatham Park 250,000 gallon treatment plant on their property that they would build, that the town wouldn't theoretically have anything to do with. That's that little wedge right there, 250,000. That treatment plant would presumably, I haven't seen drawings or anything, so I don't have anything to show you, but what I've heard from their engineers is that plant would be built as a state-of-the-art packaged plant where visitors could go and see the, walk inside of it and see, it would have glass walls and you could see the vegetation and it would do the treatment with constructed wetlands and what have you. And then it would send treated water down Chatham Park property all the way to the property they own where the non-discharged land is, where the chicken plant used to be. And they would fix that up and use the permit to discharge it on that facility. That's their plan. I haven't seen any of those details, so I can't tell you where they are in that planning process or what have you. So back to the deadline of the end of September, we could, we could just as easily decide to wait and deliberate this until March 2016. But we know that revolving loan funds are competitive. They have about 70 million in their account right now. And as far as we know, there's no big city-type developments coming through to them yet. You know, the Rowleys, the Winston Saloms, the Wilmington's who find that their loans or financing very attractive, it's 2% roughly. So we believe if we submit, we have the option to, for the process to continue. And we have, in my opinion, a better than 50/50 chance of not competing so heavily if we wait till March. But that's just a, kind of a gut feeling to me. And then we also have the opportunity to do financial analysis, to look at affordability, to look at cost sharing, to look at a development agreement and all those other issues that would come in after the fact. But we could finish our PER presumably with Option A, hit it in and have Deener process begin. Because, you know, we still have the, the local government commission would have to review our books and we'd have to sit down with them. And we'd have to do a lot of hard financial work to look at affordability and all of that good stuff. So that's why we're recommending Option A because it's, it's essentially a high-dollar number, but we think we can come in and lower it. That's the strategy. Carl is here from Wooton, and he can answer specific financial questions about the Sanford option or the cost to refurbish the existing plant. Keep the words at.
I'd like to know that number, the cost to refurbish the plant. And that, I assume that gets us just back to .75, no expansion.
Does it get us to .75 refurbishment?
Yeah, it keeps us at .75.
Okay.
The plant is designed right now for .75. The idea is to keep it that way.
And at .75, realistically, it's .6, 80%.
Oh, we're talking about when you have to give in plans again. But 80% is when they say you have to start looking at future options.
Right.
Now, in this case, because of the way we're setting this up, is we're not, we're not looking at expanding that plant anymore in the future based on this option. And you would have that, you'd be building the pump station to Sanford at the same time. So if you look at your red line, you won't get close to 80%. It'll be about seven or eight years before you get there. Is it, am I answering your question or not?
I'm trying to figure out.
It's kind of a joint, well, if you do both of those at the same time, you're no longer looking at just the flow at the plant anymore. It would be that plus what you're sending off to.
Sorry.
I think maybe one of the answers is we're already meeting the 80% requirement because we're doing the planning to move forward.
So we can go to 90?
So we can go to 90. We're in, we're in no jeopardy. We're beyond 80 and they're fine with that. We're doing our planning.
So when we talk about refurbishing the plant, putting $5 million into it, which is I think what the numbers shake out to be.
It was around 4 million.
Four, okay. That actually does have a component of an increased capacity beyond the 600,000. Because that's 80%. We go up to 90%?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it never gets to 40?
Well, I think once you start construction or you have the, the project approved and you let it for bids, I think it goes to 100%. Or do you have to start construction?
You have to, you have to start construction theoretically at the 90%.
Okay, before you can go to 100?
Right, that's correct.
All right.
And once you have your next one, once you have that pump station constructed, then you can go to 100 and you're good.
And you can go to full capacity.
I had another comment. Another advantage, which isn't very well described in this table of advantages and disadvantages that you have, is we've got the EQ basins and we don't have the full cost known to go to Sanford and we have to work that out. Wet weather flows, they're not going to give us a free meal ticket every time we send them wet weather flows. So they're going to have some premiums on flows over 2MGD, either annual average, it'll probably be monthly average. So we're looking at higher cost for wet weather flows. So maintaining the plant the way it is would handle probably 90%, I'm guessing, of our wet weather flow. So we wouldn't have that problem with Sanford premium cost type of thing.
And as far as wet weather flows, we wouldn't, from the pump at our plant to Sanford, there would be no infiltration. Is that a, no, there is still infiltration on a pressure?
No, force main, there shouldn't be.
Okay. So the only wet weather flow that they would see, receive is what is collected in our gravity system, delivered to our plant, and then we pump it.
Correct.
Instead of storing it.
And with this option two, you have the ability to run the plant at an optimal level because if it goes over that plant capacity, you have another place to put the water. So not only do you have EQ tanks, but if you pump to Sanford, you have, once you get above with the optimum that the plant likes to see, you can send that away where you don't have that option right now. You have to, you have to basically treat everything that comes in and you don't have any other choice but to do that. No matter if it peaks real high one day and goes down next.
Well, just.
Factually, what we do is we bypass high flows. We, so we shut off our sand filter and go straight through the UV. And so our TSS is high and we can't sell any water to 3M. It shuts us down. Whenever we do bypass 3Ms, that, that, that project is over until we get back to normal flow. So that's another benefit.
And we're doing 55 a day, 55,000 a day for 3M?
Well, I got a page full of comments here. If you guys are done, I'll just go through it real quickly and share it with the board via email. First, I have no objection to you submitting this permit because, or this request for a loan, because I think the odds of it getting approved are very near zero based on the financial capability of the town to pay back the debt. You know, talking about $22 million over 20 years. That's annual debt service of about $1.1 million. And if we paid all of that out of our property tax side, it would be like 24 cents on the tax rate. If we did it all from the utility side, it would be a 43% hike in our utility rates. I don't think we could sell it to the public. That would amount to $500 a year tax hike for a $200,000 house and $1,000 a year for a $400,000 house over the 20-year life of the loan. People would be paying, individuals, taxpayers in town would be paying $20,000 to support what's essentially, the pipeline in particular, we wouldn't really need the pipeline without Chatham Park. Chatham Park, I think, should just pay for that. So why not do it this way? Why don't we limit our borrowing to what, what's the town's to do, the refurbishment of the plant? You know, I think you, if you put through a request to borrow. Uh, you know, I, I think you, if you put through a request to borrow, you said about, you need about four, ask for five, you know, cover design and contingency, I think you get that approved almost immediately. That would cut down the debt service, probably be under three hundred thousand. You know, again, you, you're going to look at, you're going to have a tax increase or a property, or a utility rate increase, but it'd be more on the order of six or seven cents or twelve percent utility rate increase. Still, that's a, be difficult, but not impossible to do. And on the two M G D line to Sanford, like I said before, the only reason we need this is for growth of Chatham Park. So Chatham Park paper at all, including the debt service that's stemmed, that Sanford is asking, uh, they want us to pay debt service for two twelfths of their plant forever. And at the end of that, we would own nothing. They still own their plant. Uh, I think Chatham Park indicated, I don't see anybody here from, if they indicated at our, uh, retreat that they were willing to pay for it as long as they could then collect our capital recovery fees. And that's not acceptable to me either, because we need that money. You know, this is a growing, growing utility and we don't want to find ourselves in the position that we've been for the last, you know, decades where we take our capital reserves, spend it on operating expenses, and then when it's time for, when the pipe breaks down on West Street, it's a five hundred thousand dollar, uh, failure, we don't have the resources to fix it. So if Chatham Park needs to recoup this investment, and a lot of that ten thousand dollars an acre onto their seven thousand acres, uh, they market it to other people, and that would net down seventy million dollars to spend on utilities infrastructure, then they're couping it that way. We'd still collect the excess capital recovery fees, bank that into our capital reserves so we can continue to fix all this new stuff that we're going to have. Uh, I don't, I don't think we can ask taxpayers and utility customers of Pittsburgh to take on a crushing loaded debt, you know, to realize the dreams of business of Chatham Park. You know, they're underwritten by a billionaire and we're not. So that's where I would stand on it. Smaller loan, take care of our business, get Chatham Park to take care of theirs, and I think, and I think your point will require.
Well, I, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, Bill. And, um, I guess a characterization as the town and Chatham Park as being distinct entities, um, I guess I, I get, I, I don't understand that exactly, because I don't see the town, the, the, that green line is based on, what I heard, projections based on zoning. Okay. So that excludes Chatham Park, but it includes all the other zoning. And I know the town isn't putting in subdivisions. The town isn't building industrial plants. The town isn't building commercial shopping centers. So we are still relying on citizens, investors, to make that green line happen. We've got another citizen, another investor making the red line happen, but it's all Pittsburgh. I think we've got to figure out how we're going to accommodate that red line and that green line, whichever one it is. Right now, Chatham Park is here, an approved master plan, they want to move forward, lots of work ahead of us, the red line is Pittsburgh. They will be annexed, they'll be paying taxes, they'll be paying water and sewer, uh, customers, and they'll be helping us with our capital facilities and our infrastructure. And right now, our infrastructure is a water plant and sewer plant. So, yeah, they'll be contributing. I think we can find a way to make this work and that's what a development agreement's all about.
If I may, I, I don't, I mean Fred, Fred and Carl mentioned cost, or it was Fred mentioned cost, and we mentioned it in the memo. I don't think, I don't think we're recommending or anticipating that we submit any application, whether it's now or in March, that would require the town to pay the full freight of all the costs that you see on the red line.
Right.
I think the trick is to, if, if we can move forward, whether it's now or whether it's in March, the trick is to hire, um, to hire consultants, financial consultants, like we recommended in Bravo, that can help us determine this nexus and the right mix, the right soup, the right sausage that goes into making up this nexus here. Again, cost sharing, we're not asking, uh, the town to necessarily foot the bill, and I don't recall that Chatham Park is asking the town to foot the bill. Um, so, I mean, I totally agree with what, what the mayor said, I mean, we should be footing the bill for it and I don't think that we're trying to put the town in position to do that.
If you have a date, if you need, if I have a million dollars a year debt service, we would be responsible for it.
Yeah, and, and there's no, we don't, right now, we're operating, this is the first year in about four that we actually are breaking even on our, we don't have a million dollars to pay down a debt. And that, you know, from the day you finish this project, uh, you cut the ribbon, you will, you will gain exactly zero new customers, you'll start gaining customers the day after. But that million dollar invoice is coming from the bank that year, so where's that money at? So, we're not in a position to carry that over time, the developer is.
So the way Deener will look at this application is they, they need to see what our plan is over twenty years. So, um, I think we could go in and say, we'd like to borrow four or five million to get phase one done. And they're going to go, well, well, great, but what are you going to do in twenty twenty when you're maxed out? And then, you know, we'll have to have that conversation with them on, um, the, the twenty year plan.
Yeah, I, I, you know, my answer to that would be, well, we're going to do these things concurrently. We want to borrow money to do the plant refurbishment and, uh, the day we break ground on that, Chatham Park can break ground on the line to Sanford, and we can build the two things concurrently and, uh, let them contract with a, uh, let them contract directly with a construction contractor in Sanford and, uh, let's keep our finance officer out of that mix.
Well, the, the applications, that's going to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, just because that was the question I have about that, was like, how would we factor in other development that happens at the same time that's with Chatham Park? There's going to be a difference too, so that would be my question, to how would we factor in here?
That, that's kind of, that's sort of built into the green line.
Yeah, okay, right.
Um, but you'd also be, we're talking about the eighty, ninety percent?
Mm-hmm.
And you're going to hit that within a couple of years based on the green line.
And Fred, let me get clarification. Green line is without Chatham Park. The red line is Chatham Park plus Pittsburgh.
Right, correct.
If we're going to segregate.
Right.
So within that red line is this other, this other, the other developers, the other land that's zoned, and it's based on a zoning estimate right now.
And, and the thing to remember, this application does not obligate the town to anything. What it does is it, it gets you in the queue to see if you can be eligible for this funding. If you decide, you know, they go through a process in the mid-December and January is when they actually make decisions on who they're going to offer a loan money to. So the town of Pittsburgh has no obligation at all from this application. Um, you're, you're not out anything, no matter what they do. You can always say, no, we don't want to enter into this loan at all.
We said we want to enter the loan, but unless we're now.
You could, but if you want to look at the twenty-year window here, we're looking at a larger number anyhow. Um, now, in, in actuality, we're looking at the first phase is what we're looking at. Now, you could as an option, you know, I, I guess you're, you know, you can, I know for a fact that you can put in for a certain amount of money and then you can scale it back. You can't do it the other way around though. So if you, if you apply now for five million and they say, fine, you're awarded that, if you try to go back and get another ten million later, for whatever reason, they're going to, they're going to, they're probably going to say, no. So it's better to go on high and then you can cut back later, and that's going to free up money for somebody else, so they're not going to have a problem with that. So.
But if you go in too high, the local government commission's going to review our finances and, and twenty-two billion is the answer, I can tell you right now, the answer is going to be no.
Okay, well, then you would know the answer.
Yeah.
You'd, you'd find out exactly what they're going to allow. So that would be another good part of the application. You give in and then come back and then say, well, you're only going to be able to do this much and you still haven't obligated yourself to anything.
Yeah, I, I think the local government commission too is going to make determination after we've had a chance to exercise diligence on caution. I think, I, I absolutely agree with you. I think if we went in right now hat in hand, we, you know, it might be an uphill battle. But after we've had time to work through, work through some of the financing and development agreement issues, I think we, we obviously have a much better chance.
And it might be that L G C will tell you, this is how much, and then you can go to Chatham Park and say, well, if you want in, you pay this much upfront.
Well, like I said, I don't object to submitting that application, I just would caution people about being optimistic that you're going to get anything, but a, a negative reply. And maybe, maybe you would get some useful information about, no, this is, you're never going to get this amount, but you ought to, once you try ten million, maybe you.
And you can use it, look for leverage here.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and let me say this, since I've been on this board, it's always been a wastewater treatment problem. It's always been, we need additional capacity, that's why we can't grow. So I think this is definitely a viable option. I don't know about just pumping, that pumping to Sanford, I was sort of hesitant on that because I thought one of the other options were better, but definitely, we have to do something if we're anticipating growth. So, and basically, let me ask you about the pump to Sanford situation here. Are you saying basically that that will only be used by Chatham Park? Is that, that's it?
No.
I just want to be clear on that.
If you look at the green line, what that point seven five is, that's the capacity of the plant. Once you get above it, you're going to have to pump to Sanford. You're going to have to use it.
All right.
And again, that's another place where there's, it's the whole cost sharing, you know, talk about it, there's, there's, there's going to be that component. But, yeah, you're, you're able to use as, as much as you can negotiate with them of that two million gallons. So it, it's a negotiation between you and Chatham Park on that.
And also, it doesn't have the eighty, ninety issue. It's two million, two million.
It pushes it out a way.
Not eighty percent of two million until you do something else, spend a lot more money.
That's right, because you're, you're pumping to Sanford and they have to worry about their eighty percent of their plant. Right? You don't have to worry about it in your agreement. When they make the agreement, they got out of the agreement.
And that'll be a little question, another question rather, in reference to that, where you have the disadvantages not in charge of user in-depth, in-depth charging. Now, these user charges, you're talking about the users here in Pittsburgh, that's who you were referring to?
Yeah, what would, what would happen, what would happen is you would, when you're running your own plant, you're still going to be running your own plant, so you'll be in charge of that portion of it. But what goes, what goes to, um, Sanford is they'll, they'll be more, I mean, they're not completely in charge of running rates, cause they'll be, if you work out in the development agreement, you can, I mean, the agreement with Sanford, maybe there's some leeway in there. And you can ask them, well, let's look at your operating costs, base it on something that's real, that we can adjust. You know, that, I've seen those in agreements before, where they might have a, a, a certain rate per gallon and if, if they look at their operating expenses, maybe you can negotiate something in there where, okay, well, we're going to pay this much now, but we want to keep looking at these operating expenses and the cost per gallon as you, as you, as your plant gets more flow into it from other people or from us. So it's, but it is, it is less direct control because it's coming from them.
The Sanford issue, i- it is questionable for a lot of reasons. And, um, but one of the things is the longer, the more we send to Sanford, the more they take, the more our costs will actually go down and we can burn that into an agreement because their costs go down, the more volume they treat, their, their efficiencies go, improve, so their costs go down. And of course, the, the rate, payment rate table goes down every year, just like a mortgage on a house. So two things would theoretically go down, but the operations and maintenance probably would not go down, that would probably go up. Energy costs, staff resource costs to keep the system viable and operating.
I'd just say, I've, I've always been okay with the Sanford option at some point, because when you do the math, I never viewed that as an either or, should we do it all here or should we do the Sanford thing, either or. It was clearly, one month you add up the total that we're going to need, it was eventually going to be both. There were going to be some enhancement here and then add Sanford to get the last two million that you needed to give where you needed. So I'm fine with the Sanford option, it's going to have to happen to get the total numbers we need anyways.
Yeah, and the, the other benefit of it i- is that it, it doesn't take up the discharge capacity to your creeks. So it's going somewhere else. So you, that frees up, you have a permit that allows only so much water to the law and to Robeson Creek. You're taking two million gallons and it's, it's not going to the creeks anymore. So even if you get beyond their chart, the chart that was up there, you may have some capacity in the future, even beyond this chart, um, in terms of discharging, you know, to, to one of those two creeks. So that's another, you know, advantage of that, of that option, you know.
So I guess the question before us, the, the staff is asking to, uh, with our permission for them to submit this, uh, loan package, uh, what's our comfort level with, with that request?
Well, I'll tell you, I've, I've been thinking about this a lot, I'm sure everybody has. And, um, I know it's tempting to try to push this in the door right now, but I lean towards going in in March and taking this time to work on the details at Sanford and work on the detailed Chatham Park, so we have a better idea of what the particulars are and what the details are when we go ask for a loan. I would hate to submit for a loan, be granted the loan, to find out that we, financially we don't like the Sanford deal, we don't like the Chatham Park deal, and to del, tell Deener that, thanks for the twenty-three million, but no thanks. So I'd like to take this time to work on the details and I'd like to ask staff to, uh, reach out to Sanford and to ha, open up the discussion, expressing our interest in, um, reaching an agreement or exploring an agreement and see if we can come to a, an agreement. I think we're two motivated parties to try to help each other, so I'm sure we can come up with a good agreement, but, um, I'd hate to be tempted to go in the door quickly right now without knowing that information.
What do you all think about delaying it for six months?
Well, I do, I do agree with Fred and I think in the March submittal, there will probably be some bigger cities. In fact, having told by the Deener representative, I talked to the guy in head of this program, the loan program for Deener, for wastewater plants, he told me he expects to have at least one, one size Raleigh or Winston-Salem for sure in March. And their, their loan applications are usually in the range of fifty, forty, fifty million dollars. And we don't know what the fall, I mean, what the spring pot of money is going to be. This fall pot of money is seventy million right now, seventy to eighty million. And I, the, the representative, Deener can't, he obviously can't state with certainty when someone's going to apply or not, cause that's up to the, the community that's doing it or the municipalities that are doing it. But he is, his, his read on it was it's much more likely that there's going to be, let's see how to put this, he said he wasn't sure if they were going to come in the fall, but he was almost sure they were going to come in March. These other, these other communities, Winston-Salem was one of them and City Raleigh was potentially another one. So basically, the pie is cut smaller, the chance of getting the pie is cut smaller, is most likely cut smaller by going in March. And you could, you know, during, they don't move at super light speed, they're going to be moving, they're going to be awarding in January or something like that, or notifying you in January, and that would still give you time to do the, you know, the more detailed work, financial work with, with, with Sanford.
Six, three, addressing some of the things that Michael.
Sure.
MSI, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll, I'll do the rework. (laughing).
Say the last two sentences.
Yeah. Um, I, I had talked to the Deener representative and, and he was expecting that, he said he couldn't say that Raleigh and Winston-Salem weren't going to give an application this fall, but he was almost certain, much more certain, that they would do it in March. So in essence, you have a pot of money, a pie of money, if you want to think of it that way, and it's only sliced to so many people. And if you wait till March, there's a good chance that more portion of that pie could potentially just be gone for you. Um, one of the other things to keep in mind is in the scoring system for the loans, when you apply for, for an application, the, the points that they give are not as high if you're expanding, you know, if you're just going in for an expansion to handle future growth. Now, I've scored out some stuff and you score pretty well, but, but some other communities might be able to score better than that, uh, potentially, just because Deener doesn't give you points for, for growth. The bottom line is, is that the pie may be the same, the same size or smaller in March. And if you apply now, you're still going to have, they're not, they don't move at light speed over at Deener, so they're going to still be waiting till January, roughly, January is when they put out their offer. It, it's a loan, who they basically have selected as being eligible for a loan. Then they, then you, then they come back and they're going to make an official offer to you. Then they, then you, then they come back and they gotta make an official offer to you after that. So, you still would have time, that timeframe, to try to work out some of these details on an arrangement with Sanford and/or Chatham Park in that timeframe. Um, I would just hate to have the opportunity of getting a loan kind of fizzled out because of increased competition in March.
I'm actually in favor of doing it, submitting it September. Just in case.
So, that deadline is Wednesday, I assume this, this application's probably already written somewhere.
It's not completely written because we didn't know what option you wanted to do.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're gonna have to hoof it, to be honest, but, but we've got a, a good portion of it done, but they've, you know, if you say, okay, you know, Carl, go with option A, then, then we'll go with option A. And what we would, what we would submit on is the 23 and a half million dollars, which is basically not, not town, not paying for Chatham Park's decentralized plant, that's not on the table. So, it would be, it would be for the refurbishment of the plant, and then for pumping to Sanford, that's what you'd be applying for.
Okay, I, I think we understand the question, and, and all, most of my questions are answered. If anybody have any further questions for Mr. Roy, the consultant? If, and, does somebody want to operate a motion to, for a particular action here?
I'll make a motion, we submit in March.
Do you have a second for a motion to delay this, if it'll fill in March, relative to the applications?
I was gonna say, I think it'd be very risky because there's a chance we wouldn't get it, and we didn't really want it.
Yeah, I think finding out sooner than later, that we're probably not gonna get it, get it anyway.
Better than waiting, but I don't.
As far as negotiating with Sanford, we can, we can always, if we're gonna get a new loan, we can always, Sanford knows that we can always find out we don't want it to, I don't think it necessarily means that we're not in a horrible place with things.
And they were saying we could work on a fee structure once this is submitted to, right? So...
I think that's true, yeah.
I understand your concern.
Yeah. The motion on the table has not been seconded, there's no second, see the motion's died for lack of a second. Any other motion on this subject?
I'd like to make a motion to submit application by September 30, 2015.
Okay, to be specific, for op, the options recommended?
Option A, yes.
Option A recommended. Been moved and seconded, that we give the staff authority to submit an application to Deener for, is it 23 million dollars?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Four, four, three, I, in one day, so motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work, Carl.
Thanks, we'll bring some documents forward for the mayor's signature.
Uh, uh. Act number seven, golf cart ordinance, Chief Cretschfield.
Excuse me. I got to turn my memo. Uh, this is just more or less, we had a discussion about a month ago about the golf cart ordinance. Y'all asked that I look into the validity of a safety restraints, i.e. seatbelts. And, I looked a little further into the research, and, just to paraphrase, approximately 40% of all injuries involving golf carts involve someone falling out of the golf cart. Now, we need to remember that I'm getting this information from my Consumer Product Safety Commission, other places, and this is injuries anywhere, this would include a golf course, golf carts being used recreationally, and also golf carts are being used on streets. So, I don't know the exact statistics as to the injuries on how they use, there's not really a good database for that. But that said, based on the information that we looked into and our concern for, and the research clearly shows that a lot of these injuries come to small children because golf carts by their design, without a restraint system, when they make a sharp left, and almost all these injuries occur to children when they make a sharp left. Their design is not to, to restrain a small child, because usually their feet aren't touching the floor, it's hard for them to reach the handles, and I'm sure most of us are in golf carts. So, a lot of time, children will fall out, and if you're driving on a, a hard asphalt or concrete surface, you can get a head injury. Uh, so based on that, I amended the original sample ordinance to add, I think it was item 12, which I used, I just basically cut and paste for paid them the verbiage out of the federal standard for safety, uh, safety restraints, seatbelts. And, I added those to the proposed ordinance, and that was straight out of the federal requirements that were cited in the state statute. And, that's pretty much it. I added the safety restraints section to our ordinance. I also forgot to add in that sample ordinance, my recommendation would be based on other municipalities in North Carolina for the fee for violation. Most of them were around $50, there were some that were as high as 100, I saw one that said a maximum of 500, but the majority of them were around $50, so my recommendation would be approximately $50 fee for the violation of the town ordinance. And, as far as a registration fee, it could be something nominal. I don't foresee us getting a whole lot of golf carts registered if we decide to do this with the town. So, something just pretty much covers Nancy's staff's administrative time and the cost of, like, providing stickers, which would be a nominal fee. So, I, we could probably do that for 10 or 20 dollars a year easily. Plus Nancy tells us we don't.
So, what was your recommendation to fill in the blank of the penalty?
On the penalty, I, I would recommend $50, your honor. That's most depart, uh, I should say departments, most towns in North Carolina, I got their set, uh, their policies, most of them recommended 50, so I just kind of figured that to be the industry standard, for lack of a better term.
I think I asked the block, but I forgot to answer. Would these be allowed, bicycle lanes, I'm thinking about what Chatham Park is in place, and there's a network of bicycle lanes, that they'd be allowed?
Well, as far as on private property, we wouldn't be able to restrict it, but whatever becomes our greenways or parkways, if, if we decide to allow it, I reckon we could, but we also have the right to restrict them, just like we could restrict skateboarders or whoever. So, that would be however we want to tail our ordinances on the, on the greenways, parkways of the town.
I think that would certainly make the golf carts more possible, if they had more rates of transport.
And of course, there were, I'm sorry, there were concern on both sides with the seatbelt. If you see, I noted in the memo that, of course, some, uh, industry experts were saying, well, when you have a seatbelt, because golf carts aren't designed with the rollover protection like a normal car, that was a concern. But, then, if, if you see the, the federal standard for low-speed vehicles and the state standard that mirrors that, they do recommend the seatbelt. If you're, if you want to restrict the state of North Carolina, as we did, you have to have safety restraints. So, I feel like if we're, if we're following a state standard, we're obviously gonna be on more solid ground, in my opinion. I defer that to Mr. Messick, though.
So, remember, we, we talked one time about infant seats, or, and now that law is, kids gotta have some sort of a booster seat, and up till that certain weight, so are we gonna use, apply that same law to these things, are we gonna let people have, what do I call it, baby bucket in there?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. Now, haven't found anything in any of the research that required that, uh, I, you're saying like a, an infant, that would have to be a car seat?
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm sure that if they, if, if we're requiring them to have the seatbelts, the, the infant carrier will strap in via that seatbelt the same way it should in a motor vehicle.
I, I-
So, I mean, we can always amend and prohibit in that, that all, all juveniles under the age age should comply with North Carolina, uh, safety or, or, you know, should comply with North Carolina's safety or strength requirements, if you understand.
I think that's-
That's a good question, I just didn't, I hadn't even thought of that, as far as that.
Personally, I would never put an infant car carrier in one of those things, but, uh, I guess we need to-
I would think, there's always somebody out there that's gonna try.
Number eight, on here, about the golf carts operating to the right edge of the road and must yield to all vehicular pedestrian traffic, are they not going to be on the street at all? What do you say, are they on the shoulder, I want to clarify.
Number eight?
Yeah, clarify.
Golf carts must be operating to the right end of the roadway and must yield to all vehicle pedestrian traffic. Uh, basically, the way I understand that, and again, Mr. Messick, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, they have to yield just like any other motor vehicle, all pedestrians still have the right way, and they'll have to yield, basically, they can't be blowing past stop signs, they're supposed to, they gotta obey all the motor vehicle laws, just like any other motor vehicle. And technically, that's the way it is in North Carolina, even a bicycle is technically required to obey with all motor vehicle laws, or, or it's actually vehicle laws, a bicycle's a vehicle in the roadway. When you see a bicyclist roll through a stop sign and make a right turn, they are technically violating all, running that stop sign, because they're required to stop like any other vehicle.
Roadway in that context is just a travel portion of the road, not the right way. So, they have to stay on the road.
Um, I have a question about number two, um, the crossing, I think you said, for example, Hillsboro Street's a main beauty, so they're not allowed on that, but they can cross over 64 Business, East of West Street, a section of Thompson Street, actually, is a state highway, and then actually a section of Pittsboro Elementary School Road is a state highway, and NC87 Connector Road, those are the top ones I can think of. And it would be pretty much anywhere in this downtown area, but once you get north of Springville Drive, it turns into a 45 zone anyway, but that's a state highway. But all the town streets in this downtown area would be, they're either 35 or 25 mile crash speeds on less than a 25, so they would be allowed to drive on that, with fast service.
Well, this is the chief's, this is about the third time he's trucked, in fact, if we keep giving him our homework, but, uh-
That's what you're begging to do?
Yeah. I thought, I thought we might be ready to do this tonight, but then we, and then I had to speak up and make that comment about the child restraint seats, so.
I'm sure, Mr. Mayor, if you want, we can, if you wanna have that amendment added, we can add it, y'all can pass it, we can talk to them, come out, so. If you want us to add an amendment that they must allow all, North Carolina child safety restraint required.
Okay. If the board's inclined to pass this tonight, all we would have to do is agree on the $50 fee, enter a change, uh, at the bottom there, adopt it the 28th day of September, and then ask the chief to, before I sign this, put a, put a paragraph in there about child restraint seats.
That's on Mr. Messick, of course, I want his, his blessing.
And there's one, there's one typo on line three, uh, there's an "his" that should be in the end, Pitts, uh, the town of Pittsboro, in no way advocates or endorse instead of "his" in no way. And then it'd be ready to go.
I do have one more question, but, in, um, number 11, about the mechanical turn signal indicator?
Mm-hmm.
Is not installed in hand signals or required for turn?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that just for daylight hours?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because certainly nobody can see your hand signals at night.
Yeah, I think we had a provision there, if they, if they operate at night, they do have to have lights.
What about the turn signals, though?
Uh...
Probably need to, they need turn signals at night.
Yeah, we can amend that, too, I'm sorry.
Okay. Good.
I have one other question.
I don't have, go ahead. I don't have any questions, I've got a comment regarding the, the safety of these, I'm just real concerned about getting called out on a car wreck with a car wreck in a golf cart. And I have a golf cart, don't get me wrong, I have a golf cart, I'm ready to hit the road with it, but I'm, I don't want my wheels, because I know how traffic is around town. It's, uh, you know, it's gonna take a little bit of time to cross some of these streets.
Your golf cart needs to get it, to get it from like, right across the street.
Yeah, you're gonna have to give it, I'm just, I'm really concerned about pulling up at an accident where a car has hit a golf cart with two adults in it or one, it's gonna be ugly. That's, that's the only concern I really have with golf, because I'm just really-
And that, and that's a legitimate concern, I mean, but, and, and as we grow, and as we all see, we have a, you know, we have certain times today where a lot of congestion tracks are, so.
That actually brings me to my question about the liability insurance, so when the committee comes to the town to register a golf cart, they'll have to have proof of it.
Yes, ma'am, the registration form that we, we would develop in ITs would be pretty much a carbon copy of another municipality's, would have them requiring to, to bring a proof of insurance, which is, you know, you can get that with any of your insurance carriers, a little letter saying that this, this vehicle is insured, and, and I, I think that's, we definitely should require that, because even the state of North Carolina is requiring proof of insurance on moped start July 1st next year. So, I mean, obviously, I, I feel like a golf cart can create or cause as much damage as a moped could, if the state's requiring insurance on a moped, I feel like, you know, we should, because, you know, they do, you know, if you're a betting one, some of them break some off, they may roll in a parking lot, piggyball it in somebody else's car and damage it, you know, we want to have some type of insurance.
I'm thinking, it seems a little inequitable that the golf cart wouldn't have as much insurance as a $50,000 car.
Well, but we can, uh, the state has a minimum requirement, I think it's 10, 25, something like that, so.
Chief, one of, um, our development, say, Power Place, Chatham Forest, uh, uh, I just lost, are they allowed to ride in that neighborhood, just inside their neighborhoods?
They, they should be if it's a town street, because all those town streets are-
I mean, right now, I mean, can they ride a golf cart at night?
Technically, no, because that's still a town street, and it's not a registered vehicle, we don't allow it. Now, I'm sure it maybe hasn't, uh, if somebody's got some, but, you know, technically, no. Now, if it's a development that has a private section of the street, obviously, that's private property, so we could regulate that. There's only certain, certain traffic provisions, we regulate private property, reckless drive, impaired drive, and stuff like that.
Okay, if there are no more questions with the amendments, will you ask the chief to refer here to hear a motion to adopt this ordinance establishing a town of Pittsboro belt car ordinance?
Aye.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four, four eyes in one day, the ordinance is adopted, the decided changes. Thank you, chief.
You got those for me, right?
Act number eight, we're not submitting the FYI 2015-16 operating budget, we will.
I got it, just a second, just a second.
Fred, is this yours, or is this Nancy's?
I think it's yours now. Charlie got you got it, I'll have to-
Yeah, let's go over it, please.
All right. That's what we're talking about.
Oh, yeah.
Don't sit back down then.
Um, so this is the I&amp;I Influen Infiltration Study, that, uh, the town was awarded, $494,600. It's a 0% loan, a revolving loan fund, same group as the earlier wastewater treatment plant one we were discussing. This, this amount of money, $30,000, 31,565, is for the engineering and planning piece of the loan. We're not asking the state for the full amount, we're essentially, Nancy moved money so we can get these contracts let and begin the work of smoke testing, video camera work, manhole inspections, and data management to get started, to discover what our deficiencies are, so we can hopefully reduce our wet weather flows in the early, in the shorter term. So, that's, that's what this request is for, this ordinance amendment, for just that one small piece. Thankfully, that, that $31,000 comes in well under our budgeted approval amount, so it gives us a lot of flexibility if we need to do more work, once we discover what we hope we're gonna find in a certain area. If we discover that's not the area we really need to be looking, we may have to spend some more money going to a, a second area. But this would get, um, this would get us started.
Okay, so I understand this is supplementing the loan, the loan wasn't sufficient to complete the whole project, or where was it, was designed, is disallowed?
I'm sorry?
So, we're supplementing the $494,500?
Um, this is actually a part of that fund. We haven't, um, we haven't requested the, the full amount, and we, we, the process is, we have to submit the bid and spec package-
Okay.
-before we request, or, before we request the full amount, which-
Okay.
-is mostly construction.
So, this is about cash flow, Nancy?
Yeah, that is-
Yes, it is about cash flow, what we basically do is, we need to front the money a little bit, and then we can be reimbursed, so that's why I recommended that we make money from, from capital reserve to help pay for this, and then when, when we get our funding, we can reimburse ourselves.
Okay, I got it. Any other, any further questions? Do you have your motion to adopt?
Still move.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Ordinance is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business number one, ordinance authorized process for development agreements.
The Chatham Park Master Plan has a number of provisions in it for next steps following the master plan, uh, you develop what goes to last week about the small area plan process. Another, another, uh, component of the subsequent steps for the master plan are, is a negotiation and action on a development agreement. So the, uh, as we have pointed out in memo, and you have talked about before, North Carolina general statutes authorize local governments to enter into development agreements, uh, for specific property under certain conditions, and the, uh, one of the things that, uh, one of the provisions of the statute says that, uh, a government, that in order to do that, a government has to establish procedures and requirements for, uh, the submittal action, uh, review and action on a development agreement. So, uh, working with, looking at the statutes, uh, Attorney Messick has helped us, uh, draft some, uh, a procedure for dealing with development agreements between the town of Pittsburgh and a, and a developer, uh, and that's what we're proposing here. So this is, this, what this would do is to, uh, put in place the procedure for dealing with, uh, an application for, uh, a development agreement, and the, uh, it includes specific elements that have to be included in an application for development agreement, and it also includes, uh, the process for, uh, review and action on a development agreement, which includes pre-application meeting with, uh, the town and staff, and the submittal of an application for development agreement, and then, uh, staff review, and then, uh, town and developer negotiations, discussions, followed by a public hearing, and there, there's a, a very specific prescribed public, uh, notification requirements about a public hearing for a development agreement, followed by, uh, action by the Board of Commissioners, uh, and if a development agreement is, is approved, annual reviews for compliance with that approved agreement. So, uh, the ordinance that we have in this memorandum, uh, would put that, uh, process in place, and we believe that this language I have before you is consistent with, in line with, state statutes that authorize the use of development agreements, and so we are recommending that the Board approve the town development assistance process.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I only, I only have one question, but that was a very well-written document, uh, on A nine, I just, uh, this is sort of a legal question, talks about, except as otherwise provided, any development agreement entered into, approved by the town or other local jurisdiction, or the effective date of the change of jurisdiction, should be valid for the duration of the agreement, eight years from the effective date of the change of jurisdiction, whichever is earlier. Uh, the only, the only possible jurisdictional change that I can think of is that we were treated like food, and the state were to take our E D J away from us, and under those circumstances, what, what would be the basis for us saying that, would the state honor this eight-year figure, are they going to, if they take it, are they going to disprove it? I guess I'm wondering what's the legal basis of the eight-year?
I believe that's from the statute.
It's from the statute?
Okay. And, and, Mr. Mayor, uh, one other thing I can, uh, sorry, I forgot to mention, on page, uh, on page eight four, uh, I left out a word.
Sure.
And so I would, I would ask that if you, uh, if you adopt this, uh, ordinance, we were recommending that you put that word in it, uh, under, uh, on A, at the, near the bottom of A, page eight four, there's a, this is the definitions, and it's the definition of public facilities, the statute includes the word major capital, or I just love capital, so if you insert that word, major.
Major, or capital.
Yes.
Page A six, thinking of missing words.
Yes.
Number nine, uh, lasts, or the, the only sentence, uh, last two lines says, uh, direct or indirect operations of the owner, developers, contractors, and subcontractors which related to the project, should say which are.
Thank you. So this is on page A six, yeah?
Number nine.
Last line in the...
Thank you.
So we, uh, I think we all got an email, um, had some questions about it, and one, I think, question was that, it goes, process goes all the way, I think, through to step seven, before, I think, the board is involved, and is, is that, um, is that the soonest that the board gets involved in the discussions?
Uh, step seven, I'm not sure, uh, the, uh, the board is, the, the whole point of this is to set up a negotiation, a, a, to set up conversation between the board and the developer.
Right.
That is the central feature of this whole process.
So when they submit a development agreement, the board is immediately involved, and...
Well, the, what we have, uh, what this calls for is the, uh, first pre-application meeting to, uh, so that the, uh, developer understands what the town's requirements are, and then the submittal of the application, uh, a review by staff to, uh, be able to offer information to the Board of Commissioners as the discussions begin. It's all about the discussion between the board and the board.
Actually, the board isn't, doesn't give the legal step seven, the public hearing is in front of the board, if not, uh, we'd see it at step five at least.
This is, this is your conversation?
Yes.
Agreed.
So public hearing, first.
Yeah. Step four is developer, town and developer negotiations, that's you.
Okay, so that's going to be, okay, with the board?
Yes.
Got it, okay, thanks for clarification.
Okay, any other questions? I gotta say, uh, everybody knows I went on record at one point saying that I was not comfortable with having the developer be the author of the development agreements, but having read through this document and all of the little detail it provides, I, uh, I'm quite satisfied that this, this, uh, creates a process which will, uh, result in an agreement that is good for, for both parties, pretty pleased with it.
The, the other, the other attribute of it, it's kind of interesting, is that, uh, there are no requirements, I mean, it's, it's not, there is no, no requirement, requirement that the Board of Commissioners approve a development agreement, so it's applied for, and you talk, you talk about it and negotiate, and if you are comfortable and satisfied that it, uh, is good for, uh, for the town, then you may, uh, agree to enter into the agreement, but if you're not required.
Okay, if there are no other questions, do I have your motion to adopt this ordinance with the U Penn changes that we made? So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Not being opposed to the adopted unanimous agreement. Okay, see the light at the end of the tunnel here. I'm just doing, uh, the manager's updates.
I will, uh, take the lighting at the end of the tunnel, uh, on that, and do my best with that, uh, which means I'm not going to say a whole heck of a lot, but let me, first of all, introduce Jeff and Joe, and, and planner, very glad to have him aboard. Roger has graciously agreed to help us, help us out for a few hours, we need to transition, uh, let Jeff know where all the bodies are buried, um, there are a couple, um, helping to get through, uh, of course, you guys know Jeff's history, and Jeff, if you have anything to, uh, say, Thomas...
Glad to be here, glad to come to Pittsburgh, uh, look forward to working with you all and working with citizens of the town.
Welcome to Pittsburgh.
Thank you.
Welcome to Pittsburgh. I noted in your resume that you and my son were at the U N C Charlotte, the exact same school, so...
Oh, is that correct?
I asked him, he knows you, and he said, not the big school, dad.
Yes.
Okay, uh, lighting and landscaping, it's a, uh, memorial park has been installed, um, we're pretty much gearing up at the same time for an opening event on October ten, uh, you have, um, for you some, uh, some indications, and then I also forwarded in your pack in a memo with how, uh, Mr. Paul Horn is, is kind of proposing that, uh, the meeting go, um, two other, just two caveats to the, to the memo that, that Paul provided to me, um, he wants to make sure that, uh, we thank Chatham Wireless for free wireless in the park, and also express thanks to Brad Shaw and Rob on the other side for patience, uh, during the construction, so, uh, we'll have a, a great event, and we'll be putting more information out there, um, probably in the next, uh, the next day or so, and keep that up in front. Uh, East Street sidewalk, sidewalk's been installed, went with the project, uh, contractor's engaged in stabilization work now, and hopefully we can close out, uh, so definitely, um, I think the long, strange trip is just about over, it's, uh, it's, uh, Andy Lawler here, I think is the one that got us into this mess to begin with, and, uh, I'm sure is pretty, pretty, probably pretty pleased to see this done now, uh, so, so that is going well. Um, the water main replacement, or the water main break, uh, on West Main Street, just a couple of, of quick updates about that, uh, the, the area is still clogged off, it's slightly restricted as far as traffic is concerned, um, that is to help, um, I guess, delineate the area that, that we'll be looking to repave, we're still, um, trying to get some clarification from DOT, as far as that is concerned, um, so it's paper-related, at this point in time, we don't foresee any other problems, um, with the main itself, uh, two major breaks were repaired, um, contrary to what was written in the paper, we did, I think, communicate very well with restaurant owners, uh, and managed to work with DOT to open up the parking lot, uh, on Friday night, and, uh, and keep, keeps the place open for business. Um, we are, uh, looking to replace valves on both sides of sixty-four, um, I believe on Rectory Street, and that'll help us isolate, uh, that area should make count or any other difficulties, so, um, you know, again, like Mr. Pote said, that's probably the most significant break that, that, uh, that he's seen, and definitely the most significant that I've seen, uh, we think it was a, a water pressure hammer issue, but, uh, at this point in time, we think it's repaired, and, and now we're going to move forward with, with finding it up. Uh, friendly reminder, uh, Conservation Ordinance Review Committee, uh, will be presenting a workshop on October eighth, and we'll be, uh, looking forward to that, to allow the boards some time for discussion, committee recommendations, uh, committee will be presenting the draft ordinances, uh, staff, people will be providing overview, and then we'll wrap it up with discussion, next steps, and I think we're going to try to conclude by six thirty, uh, if that, if that is okay with you, but certainly there's no restriction on that if you go longer. And then finally, uh, I reserve the table for us, the opportunity to chat, um, breakfast, that's the annual event that I'm by E D C, um, if you haven't already, please let me know, uh, if you want to be, uh, at that table, uh, and that, that's on October sixteen, uh, from seven thirty A M. to ten A M. at the bar in American. Um, and with that, I would, uh, close my comments up, and move on to the next steps.
Okay, uh, E D C updates, I don't have any for that, uh, R P O?
Nope.
Fairgrounds? Downtown Business Association?
Pocket Park, on October tenth, eleven thirty, it's looking great.
Yeah. Commissioner Concerns, Mr. Phil.
I don't have anything at this time, I'd just like to, uh, thank everybody for the, uh, the park, it really did turn out a lot better, I was not one that was, I was spending that money at the start, but it, I, it's been several, hundreds of people that have really come in on Main Street about the park, and really took the corner of the town and turned it around, really did.
Thank you. Mr. Phil?
Yeah, um, thinking about recreation facilities in Pittsburgh, and we've got Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and I'd like to ask them to make recommendations for facilities. Now, when Chatham Park comes in, there's going to be recreational, well, land recreational facilities, and I think they should be tailored to Pittsburgh's, um, wants and needs, and I'd like to ask that board to work on devising or make recommendations on what those are.
Yeah, that area more than anything else, the dog park, if you want a dog park, that was part of the plan, uh, one of the first, but, um, boy, too many better people are moving in.
Sorry, just by having to tell that I came from, a major controversy was the dog park.
Well, let me ask this question, in tonight's discussion about the, um, fees for the small area plan, I, there, we got, included was our F Y I of the plan, and I think it has some, um, errors in it that I'd like to point out, and we should do it this time, or when would be the appropriate time, because we really didn't have that on the agenda. We, uh, mentioned, it's, it includes solid waste collection, and I don't think that was part of what we had in, in the plan, and the other thing, I think that we stated here that two weeks prior to any decision, the board shall allow, shall, is in there, but I think that the way Mr. Messick stated it, he said not less than two weeks prior, and I think that's an important component, otherwise, it requires the, the board to vote two weeks after public input. If there's, and it happens three weeks between a meeting, technically, you have to do it again, and I think the board wants the ability to take input and discuss it for as long as it like.
Agreed.
So, I, I think we should say not less than, yeah.
What, let me suggest that, can you summarize those in an email to, or can, who's the custodian of, uh, let you summarize that in an email to...
Send it to Mr. Pence? Okay.
Mr. Walden, uh, you know, maybe copy the rest of us, and, uh, and you can just make those changes.
Yeah, I have to do it. Okay.
No, I don't have anything in particular, I'll just then echo with Commissioner Farrell also, and I'm fascinated about the concept of the park, park, it's great, and I'm glad that we pulled the pants.
I agree, a lot of people said the park is great, um, one quick question, people are asking me, when is it going to be available, it's all, it's all, you might have said that a little bit.
Yeah, it's nice, and you have a good background, it's, it's, I want to give you a view, you're going to build, you can write you, it's really nice.
Okay, if there's no other Commissioner Concerns, we have a closed session, or if you'd like, uh, do your motion, we have a closed session.
It's John Hoffman, and I think that we do it in this session.
Hey, Brad.
Good.
Brad.
Be plenty of them.
Brad.
Coming on board.